Yep.
Is this Mike on? Alright. This is, this is something. Everybody here is really something. It really is. It's good to see everybody. A lot of, lot, a lot of familiar faces, a few new. And I hope everybody's doing well. And we're here to do some cool things for 2020, cooler than we did in 2019 and the previous sixteen.
Which was a pretty hard A bar.
It's a pretty hard A bar. A lot of you people know me. I'm BK. This is Betsy. This is Ryan. This is Devin. You guys knew Hoodie. Hoodie has now moved. This is now what remains of the Chicago Full Moon Jam board.
Woo!
Yeah, woo. You know, it's weird, it's weird. And I'm tasked with doing his intro because... Because Hoodie's not here. And I was at the first Full Moon Jam, right? Oh, that's the first Full Moon Jam. And, and it just like wasn't even envisioned to become what this is now, at all. Buddy of ours named Ben, Liz Campanella, you guys, a lot of you guys know Liz. Mark Laro, I don't know if anybody knows Mark Laro. Fanyan, Brian Gallagher. Shorty, I think Shorty was part of that crew too back there. So, Ben Holt. He was another person in the community. It was his birthday. Him and his wife were moving to Hawaii. We're like, hey, let's go out to Lake Those Fire. You know, so we went out to where we were at Foster. But we were on the other side of the path, under a tree, with a drum. And a couple of people that threw some fire. And we sprung fire and we chilled and, you know, just kind of did what we do now, but on a... Just this group right here. Literally, right? I mean, like, for real. And, and then, um, you know, I was kind of hanging out, I'm like, man, I'm not gonna do that. And I started doing it and it started, and it didn't really grow, um... As much as it's grown now throughout the first maybe four, five years or so. Because we were just out there just kind of like chilling, you know? And it started becoming more and more popular and bigger and... To the, to the benefit of the community. It was all handled still, but it was responsibly handled from the beginning. There's no riffraff. We were just out there chilling and sharing and enjoying the evening and looking at the moon and spinning some fire and listening to some music, you know? It's grown into this thing now, right? You know, where, um, we get over a thousand people coming. And everybody, you know, everybody's wanting to come and see this thing. You know, it's this spectacle, this amazing spectacle. As a result of this growth, the responsibility grew. At, at one point, the cops had to be like, you know, yo, you know, you gotta get permits now. Because this is like getting a little too big. And we've been doing this under the radar like for twelve years, eleven years. You know, just out there but being very, very safe about it, being very, you know, we, we within the community initiated the safety protocol calls and the training sessions and, and all of that. Because we wanted to make sure that we were safe, they were safe, everybody's safe. That's what it's all about, right? So then, we had to start getting these permits. It's cost money. And just to make the long story short, we now are at a point where we have to have insurance for this. Because it's just like, it's just this big thing now and people can get sued and there's all that stuff. And again, you know, to the, to the kudos of the people that have really, really grown this thing. They've continued to handle it very responsibly. You know, there's all these, everybody sitting out here, all you guys sitting out here. You know, have not shut this down. Because it could have happened. It has happened. There have been other entities that have tried to do what, what we do. But we try and keep organic, we try and keep it fair. We're gonna thank everybody for coming out here tonight. Because we want, we want, we need input. You know, we need input, we need input, we need support. We need volunteers, we need help, we need everything that you guys are doing now to just kind of, you know, help make this grow. The last point on here is something that I want to just kind of re-verbatim that Devin, um, put out. And one thing that we're definitely continuing to do is setting norms and cultivating culture. Inclusion, you know, representation. Creating safe spaces, you know? Working on statements and protocols to ensure that everyone feels welcome and safe at our events. At least at the Full Moon Jams. What, support the community, support the jam, or what is it?
Protect it.
Protect the community, protect the jam. You know, think about that when we're out there. Think about that when you're just walking around and you see somebody, you know, maybe not kind of doing something too cool. If you don't feel comfortable about just saying, hey, man, cool out. Find me. I'll ask him nicely. You know, so... I think, is that enough? Did I say enough?
Yeah, no.
Here, here.
So, to kind of add on to that, I think that we, we definitely want to create the norms that people can carry into Elements outside of the jams as well. By, you know, representing this, this community and, and kind of carrying our ideals of the whole race, of supporting each other and, you know, emboldening each other and encouraging one another. I think that's kind of one of the biggest takeaways that the jam provides is giving people motivation to do better, to mo-, you know, to organize people, events. And, uh, put together these sort of, um, ideals in their own community elsewhere. And helping to encourage that. And by partnering with the city and other entities throughout the last several years, I think that we've, we've done that. And we've encouraged other organizations, other for-profit events, other producers to kind of take away some of what makes the jam so special. And so I think that one of the agendas for today is really to encourage everyone here to embrace those concepts and ideologies. And help to foster that so that next year, we, you know, double our impact in that, in that, in that sense. Yeah, so, do you want to explain a little bit more about how we've expanded over the past few years?
Sure, sure. I'm Ryan, for those who don't know me. I think probably the coolest part about the jam is how everyone really does come together. We have a couple of different smaller ecosystems. We have the crowd, which is almost an animal in itself. We have, uh, the drummers, who, they actually manage themselves, not really with any of our help. They get all of their drummers, they get all of their meetings, their practices on their own. And then they bring their best to the jam itself. We have, uh, the yoga, uh, the yoga crew. What's the name of them? Uh... We'll call them Team Yoga. You know, uh, you know, again, without our, um, resources or our help and that such. You know, they've put on another free-to-the-public event that almost happens before the jam. We've also grown even before the fire dancing starts. Uh, did you guys, were you guys around for the, um, the children's circus?
Circus team?
Yeah, Cir-, Cir-, Circus Team. Uh, they were generous enough to donate their students, their talent, their time, their materials to entertain a crowd that, you know, that we supplied. But, you know, I think that was one of the highlights of my summer. That was in 2017, if I remember right.
I think so.
Yeah.
They were kind of around for a couple of years. I think they did 2018 as well.
Yeah, something like that. Great show. We're actually gonna, we're working on having them come back, so something to really look forward to.
Their, their partner organization from Thailand?
Indonesia.
Indonesian, yeah.
Yes.
Adam Marah?
Yeah.
They were amazing. I liked them.
Yeah, there's a few other groups, um, the names are invading me right now. But in contrar-, in, in contrary to that, we've had what we call a few near extinction events. Um, we've come very, very close to the, to midnight hour. Uh, DEFCON 5, for sure. Like, um, the first one was with the permitting of this, of the jam itself. Um, we flew under the radar for a very long time. Twelve years, essentially. And then one day, uh, Big Brother stuck his ugly nose in our awesome business and said that, you know, the city of Chicago wants their, wants their cut too. So permitting was easier said than done. Because essentially what we're doing, there's no rules, there's no regulations to fire dancers. Because we're classified under the same legal grouping essentially as pyrotechnics, explosions, fireworks and, and stage performances. Which essentially we don't share any similarities to. So every, every move that we make is constantly defining and refining and explaining to people that essentially have no idea what fire dancers are other than maybe they've seen it at a hotel, you know, at, in, in Mexico or something like that, you know? That was the first hurdle that we got over. The second one was funding. With growth comes, uh, you know, expenses. Equipment, gearing, training, facilities, storage, fuel, all these auxiliary costs. Ropes. You guys have been around long enough to kind of see how it all's kind of grown from everybody is sitting in a circle and using paint buckets to dip into. And then the third was our group insurance. Now, this was almost the event that put everybody out on the street. The city of Chicago said that instead of just the event being permitted and having, we'll call it a general liability policy. For, we call it our slip and fall insurance. We needed group fire performer insurance. And again, since there was no regulations, no actual avenues to explain what we do. They wanted, uh, a hundred thousand dollars?
So, that was, uh, that was our estimated cost when it became apparent that the only option was that every single individual performer participating in the jam would have to provide their own. And that's four hundred people times three hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. If we wanted to support all those performers and allow them to still participate.
Yeah, 2019 almost didn't happen. We were like, this may not happen.
We even had, we even had a town hall meeting to kind of bear our grievances and say, hey, team, this...
Who's got ideas?
Yeah, because we, we were shit out of luck.
Yeah. Because there are not many insurance companies that provide that. Right now, the only one we know of is specialty. So that was pretty much where we could go. And they don't offer group options or discounts or anything to that extent. So...
Because you're, because it's already, it's already a group policy. If you've noticed, it, you know, you're kind of grouped already into one lump sum with every other fire performer across the country. So you can't have a group insurance off of group policy, you know? But anyways, so those were, those were our, you know, close calls.
So, so PEEF Insurance, for summary, PEEF Insurance was a company that, um, somehow Hoodie magically found and connected with. And worked out extensively all the details about what we do, explained to his representative, you know, going back and forth. And finally got a quote from him that, you know, basically made it extremely financially plausible.
Easy, yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll go into that later.
Yeah. And then, of course, you know, uh, the Full, the Full Moon Jam and some of the other performers, uh, we do events out in the city. We've done National Night Out in the Parks for, for the police, uh, was it the seventeenth cap, the twenty-one caps?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them. We've done events for them, uh, which always helps, you know, kind of offset, mitigate some of the charges, some of the costs. Because we always want this to be a free event to attend and a free event to perform in. Crowdsourcing is the only way this really ever happens. And we'll kind of get a little bit into that with the recap and how that fell into place. As part of our growth, we've also done Halloween parades, which I know at least half of the people here have all been in, performed, drove the truck with us, you know, one way or another. Um, it's a great way to get, you know, our name, our face, our, our energy out in the community where people can see us. Because the jam is one of those events that people still know about but always haven't been to. Oh, I've seen the, the, the fire dancers on Foster. Right, right, right. But when we, you know, jam it down their throats down, you know, down, uh, down State Street or, or down, uh, Lincoln or, uh...
Hallstead.
Hallstead. You know, it's kind of, kind of hard to ignore us at that point, so... With also growth, we've established the Full Moon Foundation, uh, which are, is myself, Devin, Betsy, BK, uh, Hoodie's still on it as well. And, uh, Liz is a meritus of that as well too.
And Mitch.
And Mitchy, and Mitchy, correct. We essentially, you know, the foundation are the people that deal a lot with the permitting, the insurance, the, the legislature and red tape. So, most of the people don't have to. And we'll kind of tap into that a little bit more, but that was just kind of, you know, our major responsibilities. We also, um, set a lot of the guidelines and best practices for the jam and things along those lines. Kind of already went over the infrastructure, but, you know, we're always kind of constantly changing. You know, we're, we're never just static. Um, our policies are always changing, our techniques, our ethics, our code of conduct is always changing with however or whatever, um, our environment calls for. Both mentally and physically with the policies and with, uh, equipment, uh, safety procedures, writing, background, all, all of that. Our, uh, and also kind of to, to echo to that, our safety training. That's probably the least standing in one spot practice that we have. Is because we're always moving forward with the safest and best techniques and practices for safety. We're always learning from health professionals, uh, pyrotechnic professionals, uh, anybody that has the better idea of how we can be safer and keep our community safe. Uh, we're always in a, in a state of change with that. And then, yeah, it's just, you know, the reality is that we couldn't do it, this, this whole growth thing without you guys. Uh, the people in the room, the people who are watching online, you know, that's essentially the, the characteristic of our growth. We have awesome people doing rad shit. It's, it's like, you know, we, we could not do this without you. And the people that are participating actively are the reason why we continue to grow in the best way. So I'm gonna kick it off to this guy over here. And he's gonna go a little bit more into detail over, uh, the recap of last year. So, rock on.
I'm gonna not stand up. So kind of echoing on some of that and following through that, last year, um, with the safety trainings, we introduced Level 2 Training. Basically created a more in-depth exploration of, uh, the involvement of fire spinning. Uh, there's a lot of information that is very crucial. And, uh, basically, we have about a three-hour program that we needed to break up into smaller chunks to make it more digestible. We, so we basically created the Level 1 Training as the bare bones. If you're gonna do this, this is what you need to know. Level 2 basically became, if you want to produce fire spinning events, if you want to know more or, or be more involved in the sciences behind fire spinning. If you want to know how to set up your own fuel depot, if you want to be a professional fire spinner. Level 2 created that opportunity for more dialogue. It also created an opportunity for people that are more interested in learning about the firearms or becoming an organizer to also show that they're more interested by showing up to those conversations. Similarly, we also introduced the Guardian Program as a way to kind of help facilitate the audience and give, uh, non-fire spinning participants an opportunity to, to join in and volunteer as well. So this gave them kind of a guidance and created what we'd hoped would be a, um, interaction with the audience to create a, a voice or give individuals an opportunity to answer questions in the audience. Keep an eye out on people being unsafe. There's a lot that rides on the line whenever we host a jam. If someone throws a firework up, that could end us.
Lanterns.
If there's a paper lantern that just up in the tree, um, and, you know...
Did you guys hear that groan? That was impressive.
No more lanterns.
Lanterns, lasers, drones.
Yes.
God damn it, guy, setting a barbecue on fire, what have you got?
So many different things that could have easily brought an end to the jam. And so, we felt it was really important that we have people out in the audience that we can communicate with, that are easily accessible by radio to handle and respond to these sort of emergency potential situations. So we really wanted people that understood the, not only the jam's policies as a whole, but also the park district's policies about, like you said, lasers, fireworks, by open fires. And really be there to answer those questions and explain it in such a way that we aren't policing them, that we aren't going there and being an authoritative hand. Again, reiterating the importance of protect the community, protect the jam. And so, that is why, um, we really wanted to expand on the Guardian Program. Last year, we kind of hit a hiccup with it. And that's one thing that we really want to focus on for 2020 is recruiting more volunteers to help be that voice and that interaction with the audience. So for a brief summary of last year, we had fourteen events in total. Five jams, uh, which were from May through September. And then, we implemented the Reserve Jam Program, which was awesome and a huge success. We had five of those every two weeks after the Full Moon Jam. Which basically were an opportunity for people to learn more about the fire arts in general. So come, ask questions. If you're interested in becoming a fire spinner, this is the place to do it. We'll, we'll give you a Level 1 Safety Training there. If you can't make it to before the jams, it's another opportunity to attend a safety training. We, uh, hosted workshops on various different props. And then we hosted a open fire spinning session for people that wanted to try new tricks, wanted to try it out for the first time. Or just wanted to spin fire in a more intimate setting that wasn't in front of a thousand people. And so it, it kind of basically recreated the original founding sensations of the jam by making it more about participation and, and those interested in becoming more involved and learning, uh, more about fire spinning as a whole.
There's also bathrooms.
Well, let's not, let's not talk about that.
There's, there's bathrooms now?
They exist.
Those don't matter.
Exactly.
If you have a key, it's not a bathroom. Fortunately, the portability issue has still not been resolved. We're not, we can't, it's a whole gold expense. We, we, it's so expensive.
That shit's expensive.
Longish short of it, that would double our revenue, so... So then we have the two parades, the Hallstead Street Parade and the Downtown Parade, uh, both of which, again, were massive successes. And then we had the Moonlight Parade downtown in Cloud Gate. Really unexpected, came out of nowhere. We just happened to stumble upon an opportunity to apply for a grant from the city to produce a theatrical experimental production. We fit all the criteria perfectly. Like, it was like they made it for us. And, uh, the beauty, you know, so, so we applied for that barely in the nick of time. Like, it was literally the day of deadline that finally got all the paperwork in. Uh, I think they even extended it by a week just by fortune. That gave us another time to really put our thoughts together and think about it in more, more detail. And so we did submit, didn't have any expectations, thought, why not, see what happens? And a month later, they said, you're approved. We want you to participate in this program. You're perfect for what we do. And when we went to the meeting to kind of touch base with the city and learn more about what their expectations were of this program. We found that, uh, multiple other groups that we'd already participated, uh, that have already participated in the Night Out in the Parks and that we've already kind of had partnership, like Circus Team, um, I think Elements was in that group, um, Collaboration. There's a lot of groups that we've already kind of interacted with in some regard or, or were familiar with or were just a part of the Night Out in the Parks. So it was really nice to see familiar faces that were also kind of jumping into this, uh, year of theater program. And, uh, and that was a huge success. I mean, it was grueling. We, we had auditions and, uh, we had the most outstanding cast that just really rose to the occasion, stepped up and absolutely blew us all away with their talents and their skill and their enthusiasm and their passion, um, to share the firearms in front of, uh, you know, another audience downtown in the most amazing possible setting.
And just to kind of echo that a little bit, we are one of the, if not one of them, we are the first fire performance team group to do that downtown in front of the game.
There is another production event that happened a year prior.
A year prior.
We were, it was not directly in front of Cloud Gate, it was behind Cloud Gate. And it was not the main focal point.
We were the closest fire performers to ever get.
Structured, it was structured interaction performance.
Yes, exactly.
Because they even, just to kind of... Because we did the, uh, the Halloween Hallstead, uh, in front of that with the Freak Easy as well, so we did fire there.
Exactly.
I was more looking to the whole, you know, the whiz bang of, of, of the Moonlight Parade.
Being the central focus of that event.
The focus of the fire.
Right, as opposed to being an auxiliary effect. But, you know, we have to give them thanks for opening that door and basically giving a model and setting that, that pace for us. And creating the opportunity for us to be able to follow through. Because they obviously made that possible by showing it could be done. We also were there. There was a lot of representatives. Hoodie, uh, and myself were both there facilitating that event, uh, in 2018. And so we were familiar with the space, we were familiar with, you know, the protocols of what they required and what they, and what they wanted. And when it became clear that that event was a success, the Moonlight Parade basically became, uh, more practical in, in, in both our perspective and the city's. So, so we want to give thanks, of course, to the Night Out in the Parks, Pyrotechnic, uh, all the volunteers and, you know, everybody that's helped to set the pace for, for the Full Moon Jams to grow. And, uh, and so every single jam last year was a complete success. We had a lot of almost cancellations with, between rain and cold and, uh, the Halloween Parade was, uh, on Hallstead was particularly bitter. But, but as always, we plowed through it and it was absolutely incredible. We didn't have any pre-jam artist showcase last year. I think we, we tried to partner with Circus Team and Elements, but I don't think they were able to make it. And so I don't think we had any featured performance art before the pre-jam. But that's something, again, we want to change for 2020 and, um, we're working out a couple of ideas for that. We're getting to that later. We also had three podcast interviews, um, which Hoodie and, um, Liz Campanella and myself all participated. Society, it's a great podcast, highly recommended, um, check it out. The Good News, BK and Hoodie had a conversation with them. Another great interview and Curious City with Monica Heng on WPPZ was, uh, the big, you know, knockout interview that we had that really, I think, helped to put, um, put our name out there pretty substantially. Uh, there was, uh, a couple of other articles, Top 10 Things to Do in Chicago, I think we were, um, mentioned in that list. And of course, you know, we're constantly being featured in different articles and Tribune and other, other news sources, um, New City. There was a couple of the Time Out, I think it said, yeah, Time Out had a, an article on us. So we're getting noticed, which is awesome.
Officially on Google as a, as a phone, as a, as a pin drop.
Yes, so you can order Uber and Lyft, you can just literally type in Full Moon Jam.
Ooh.
It'll take you right there.
Progress.
So, we are digital, which is awesome and easily traceable. And so, yeah, with all these different programs, we really wanted to expand what we could do or offer with the jam. So the Reserve Jams were, were, were a great opportunity to kind of double the amount of events that we could host. And then, again, create an avenue for people to explore the arts, come into it in a safe and controlled way. So, uh, we really wanted to create an opportunity for people to, to join us and, and do it in such a way that we could mitigate the risks and assess who is, who is participating. So I think that's something we're gonna expand upon next year. Uh, we really want to start focusing more on the educational side of things. Because I think that's a huge aspect of what has made the jams successful in the first place, is providing education about the art as a whole. So with the Moonlight Parade, I'm bouncing back and forth a little bit. We ultimately, with that grant, um, it was an eighteen thousand dollar grant. At the end of it, we managed to save two thousand from it to fund the 2020 season. And, um, I think that, that was a huge boon that basically helped to, um... And I think that, that was a huge boon that basically helped to, to offset a lot of costs this year. We'll go into that in a little bit. The LEAF fundraiser was kind of the cherry on the fiery sundae that really helped Hannah's foster.
Yeah.
And that, that was another really beautiful, incredible event that we, we really wanted to, again, we've been talking about doing that for a long time. But we had someone step up who really wanted to kind of push that forward and be that voice. And, and we ultimately had a dozen teachers, thirty attendees, and at least a dozen workshops and an after jam, which was a huge, awesome party, and we raised a thousand dollars. And thankfully, all of that was generously matched by a corporate donor. So that has now doubled. And that means that, again, our, our season for 2020 is effectively fully funded, which is a huge, you know, a huge step in a very positive direction because up until this year, it has always been organizers fronting the funding. So it's always been Hoodie or other organizers kind of stepping in to help foot the bill for the permits and the insurance. So this is the first year that we are in the black. We're a hundred percent funded before we even started. So this is a huge plateau for, this is amazing, like, place to be. Yeah, that we can really jump off of. And I, I think that, you know, we have a lot of ideas on what type of fundraising works. And we have a lot of opportunities with new organizations to partner with. And, and so we'll go into kind of what, what our vision is for 2020. And, but before that, we'll kind of recap on, on 2019 and the budget and kind of give an overview on where we are going to stand with that.
Wait, before, before going on to Betsy, I was hoping for Devin and Ryan. I was curious how the photographer new setup rotation kind of worked out this year because I know it was slightly different and we were like, sort of have a cue for them. I wasn't really privy to a lot of the, the rotation and how that works. So I was just wondering if you could comment on that.
Yeah, sure, of course. So that actually probably something I missed in the growth portion is up, up until about two years ago, I think I was the only photographer that was welcomed into the circle because obviously it would be my job. But with all of the people that are so talented within the community, we've now opened that opportunity up to other photographers that have shown patterns of dedication, just like, just like you guys, right? They come to the jam, they're, they're invested, they say hi, they, they share their images on the regular before they're even technically welcome into the great circle. The photographers do have to take the same level one training that everybody else does, so they're not privileged in that manner. We are still always kind of growing in how we can best use their talents. I think going forward, we're going to implement a three photographer max per jam all the time. It also allows other people to be offered the opportunity to come if they know that, hey, if there's only three spots and I do want to get into the circle, then I'm just not going to kind of leave it up to chance. Or there will be seven or ten people all come at one time, which then it kind of becomes a little hectic for people that are operating gate, people that are performing. I, that, that, yeah, we're, we're still kind of refining that, but I think three is kind of the magic number. I'm sure you guys mostly know who they're going to be, the, the Niels and...
Paul.
Paul and Peter Masai.
Vince.
Yeah, Vince Giovanni, myself, you know, o- other shooters. And of course, anybody else here that's also a hobbyist shooter as well too are welcome to kind of, you know, get bumped to the front of the line because obviously your dedication and, you know, manner and all that. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, cool. So whenever, because we get approached a lot, just when the jam's happening, by amateur photographers that are ready to jump in and participate. And when that happens, do you think we should refer them to a LEAF from the jam?
Right now, right now, have them email us, info@fullmoonjam.org. Eventually, we are going to set up protocols for how to participate in every single form or fashion. So if you want to volunteer, if you want to fire spin, if you want to be a photographer, however you want to get involved, we will have sign up forms that will allow people to basically show us their seriousness.
And also kind of the, the use and the access to the images too because that's, that generally doesn't happen with, you know, with the usual suspects. But sometimes the images end up fading into obscurity and they never get shared, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of participating in the first place. So we'll, we'll eventually set up some type of semi-public holder, maybe? Gallery that at least the, the people in, in, in the circle of trust have immediate access to the images and you're able to, you know, take them and share them with whoever you want at your leisure, so.
We always want to encourage that everyone is supporting each other, even not at the jams, by tagging the photographer that took the photo. Give them credit, give them acknowledgement for their work and their experience. And of course, vice versa, you know, they, they created this beautiful image of the performer. So we want to acknowledge that it's a mutual reciprocity and that's part of what makes the ecosystem of the jams so beautiful is that there's so many different groups working together to create this, this dynamic support structure that is not like anything else.
The scenario is unlikely, but we're talking about pictures. It's unlikely the performer's out there performing wants to be seen, but we also incorporate some sort of sign off saying, hey, your picture's probably going to be taken and might get posted somewhere.
That is...
Are you cool with this?
Yeah, that's in the waiver. So if they read the waiver, nah.
And, and we also, we also do mention, the photographers also do have to sign their own auxiliary form that clearly defines if someone does not want to have their photograph taken and you do take that photograph, that you will be instantly, you know, asked to either delete the photo or if you continue to do that, to now leave.
Yeah, speaking of, on that note, consent culture is a huge part of what, you know, has become a norm in the jams as well. So whether or not that's taking photo, you know, asking for permission, or if it's saying, hey, I noticed you're not wearing fire safe clothing, and asking before grabbing it and pointing it out, you know, like, it's really, there's a lot of aspects to the consent culture that we've been trying to normalize and encourage. And, you know, again, a part of the support structure of creating community, creating safe spaces and letting people feel comfortable and welcome and, and not...
Yeah, well, and before I get into like the really fun budget numbers business, because I know you're all really excited about numbers and business. Like, we are actively talking about what does that look like as a community? So what does it look like? We want, our goal is to establish a reporting process for things like consent or consent violations. So that is something that's on our radar, it's important to us. We want everyone to know, like, this is where you can go if something happens so that there's a clear and precise process of something that will document things. Yeah, an incident report or people to talk to because I know there's a lot of people involved, there's a lot of event leads. So we're kind of, we're working on that and we will have that hopefully by the next jam season. Like, this is our process. My, hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Betsy. So I am, I am a part of the theater community in Chicago and there is an organization called Not in Our House that in the last few years has risen up in the face of a lot of non-equity theaters that have suffered kind of injustices to create a norm. So I'm working on studying what they've done to bring that to our community so that there is a direct and clear process, so that there's always a path forward and no one feels like they are burdened by that and they know where to go. So now for the really fun stuff, we're going to go and look at, do you want to pull up the 2019 budget report? Fun, fun in numbers. So the big thing I think we want to take away from 2019 and moving into 2020, first and foremost, is like Hoodie put together this really incredible, it's more on the 2020 forum. He kind of like put together this idea of if you monetized all of the volunteer efforts and all of the support we have in the community, the donated time, the donated time from the Guardians and the support we have, we are running a twenty, around twenty-two K, twenty-two thousand dollar event on a shoestring budget. And that has a lot to do with everyone in this room, everyone associated, Pyrotechnic, people that are donating their time, event leads, event coordinators, people that are running Fuel Depot, people whose time and effort really serves the community and creates this kind of like horrific storm of organization. That's really cool to watch. So thank you, everyone, because everything you're giving to the jam enables us to create this super inclusive community that makes everyone feel welcome and provides an avenue for those of us who love fire to have a safe space to do fire every month in the summer. Because sometimes you live in an apartment that doesn't have a backyard, so. It's like your one avenue. So looking at 2019, looking back at the numbers, we raised right around four thousand dollars from the CrowdRise fundraiser, which was the video promo that we did. So that in combination with the direct donations via the website and Devin's woo woo Facebook fundraiser, which like, how many of us see Facebook fundraisers? We're like, I don't know. Like, almost five hundred dollars, that's like pretty dope. That and then a couple of other donations, Amazon Smile, good, so that's an option. You can add Amazon Smile as your donation profile. You have like forty or fifty-eight thou, fifty, well, five thousand eight hundred dollars, I can read. And that doesn't include LEAF, which happened at the end of the year. We're still going to be doing that, I think this will fall into 2020, but it will still go towards this year. So if you look at fundraising plus grants, plus the payments we got for like Halsted Halloween Parade, our total income is right around twelve grand. And then you deduct like our insurance and other fees from the years. And this year, we're moving into 2020 at six, right around six thousand dollars, which is awesome because nights out in the park parade, all of that generally funds around three grand. And the average cost of a jam for a season is nine thousand dollars. So what we raised in the last year, plus that, will put us at that nine thousand dollar mark. So for the first time ever, we're going into a season fully funded, which is really awesome. People aren't having to pay for things out of pocket. There isn't like a reimbursement thing, like, we are fully funded and hopefully kind of pushing into 2021, which is a really, really awesome place to be. Because the goal for us as a board and for us as a community is to move towards sustainability, where we're continually fundraising, we're continually raising awareness so that this isn't something that we have to worry about.
Or that anyone has to take the financial burden.
Where anyone, yeah, where any member of the team has to take the financial burden on of moving this forward because permitting, insurance, all of that stuff really adds up quickly. So looking at the twenty...
Also, just a, one more caveat is that no one takes a check. No one's actually collecting, whether it's the five, six of us that are on the board, organizers, no one here makes a red cent, never has, never will.
Yeah.
Quick question.
No one can pay.
As a nonprofit, twenty, twenty-three C, is that what we're classing them?
Five oh one C three.
Five oh one C. As, as a nonprofit company, can the company itself, if we ever needed to, take out a loan to fund a season?
It's a good question.
Actually, yes, five oh one C threes can take loans. It's just finding a bank who's willing to do it.
Yeah.
But I, I have a lot of experience with five oh one C threes.
Yeah, but I was answering that with like, literally for the first time ever, we're, we're, so like, we're generally kind of fundraising in, during the season. And so for the first time ever, we're moving into a season with all of the expenses fully funded. So the next fundraising season will actually be for 2021. So the hope would be, as a snowball effect...
Let's get two years covered.
Yeah, we're going to continue to get more and more years covered and hopefully start, like Devin and I had like a, we met on Sunday and talked about dreams, like, things we would love the jam to do, to fund other programming outside of the summer jams that will create, help support community wellness. And all of that, support the jam and the community year round. We have a goal of creating events in the wintertime so that we all have a place to go and practice and hang out when it's fucking cold outside. So yeah, all of those things are on our radar, but the main focus is like, get the jams covered and then we can start expanding from there.
And that's not including the LEAF stuff, right?
This is not including LEAF. Yeah, so LEAF will be included after the fact. So with LEAF and Nights Out in the Park, our hope is that that will push us into 2021. And I think from looking at the numbers, the projections are that LEAF will push us into like maybe a third of 2021 being covered, which is awesome. Like, I want everyone to take a moment and acknowledge that like, that's the first time ever. Not only do we have a season covered, but we have the future of the jam covered too, which is awesome. And that has a lot to do with every single person in this room and the dedication they have and the hours that they volunteered and how much they care. So like, round of applause to all of you. So yeah, and if you're looking at this, so Hoodie did some like, kind of like ballpark math. And I want to take a minute to kind of, I mean, literally, all of our event organizers, our event leads, the people that are doing the trainings, that are helping behind the scenes, that are helping with the permitting. If you were to monetize all of that, it comes in around twelve grand. And you add that with our like actual palpable expenses, which is around nine grand every, every year, that brings us in right around twenty-two thousand dollars. So we are essentially running an event for a season that would cost twenty-two thousand dollars on a shoestring budget. And a lot of it has to do with all of the time and dedication that our community gives. So thank you all, thank you to Pyrotechnic, to people that donate their time, to all of our event leads that are in. If you're an event lead or an organizer, can I just like, if you're here, will you stand up?
Yeah.
Because I want to applaud you, awesome women. Like, these people, yeah, stand up, attention. Um, all of these people, yeah, there you go. Everyone's, and I feel like even people that aren't necessarily quantified as event leads, like, everyone that's part of this community is supportive and dedicating their time and their effort and their technique. And so like, I thank every single one of you for all of your sense of, like, in our case. Did you bring chicken?
Bring enough chicken.
It's like, I don't remember if it was on the table. So thank you all very much for your time and your dedication. So yeah, so if you, we'll have all of this as shareable documents so you can get into like the knit and grating if you want. But yeah, the, I think the most important takeaway is that this event, bare minimum, costs nine thousand a year to fund. And next year it's funded and part of the following year is funded. And we want to continue growing what this looks like as a community year round outside of just the summer. So, thank you all.
So, on that note, as far as publishing our budget, as far as moving into 2020 and kind of our expectations and plans of where we see this, this going and what we want to ultimately move into is providing a better infrastructure plan, creating more transparency on the way that decisions are made, on making more, making it more accessible so that people are aware of how we organize, all the different moving parts that exist, and then creating it in such a way that it's digestible and that people can understand how they can get involved, the steps necessary to, you know, becoming any particular role. If you want my job, then we'll, we want you to know how to do it. And so what we're trying to do is create this, this basic overview of infographics that kind of first lay out the bare bones information of what the jams are, they operate, who's involved, and those kind of basic numbers. Right now, we are operating with around two dozen organizers. I think the official list right now is at twenty-four, twenty-five. And so, we're always looking-
And growing.
Yeah. And so, this year, we added seven new organizers to our list, which is going to take an immense weight off, you know, event leads' shoulders by having more hands to pick up the pieces. We have three event leads currently. Those three event leads happen to be board members as well, but that is not necessarily a requirement, that's just currently the way we're structured. So, we have five board members and we meet quarterly so that we can discuss basically any particular aspect of the jam that needs to be addressed, kind of go through our budget, make sure that every few months, we're touching base to, to really formulate how we're gonna continue moving forward and, you know, plan for large scale events, talk about the parades, talk about, you know, other events that are coming up and, and basically just keep restructuring.
We also cuddle.
So, we have several departments. And so, one thing, it became clear that as we're expanding and as we have four hundred plus fire performance participants, we really needed to structurally organize all of our volunteers in such a way that they were more aware of the different roles necessary to organize the jam. So, we have around eight or nine different departments. The first of which is the Fuel Depot. Obviously, they ensure that the fueling process is handled smoothly, everyone had, is following the proper safety procedures, that their, their equipment is, is to our expectations, is not frayed, is not destroyed. So, they're the first line of, of basically defense in ensuring that the events are safe. There's a lot of processes to ensuring what kind of fuel we use, what, the safety procedures for how crops are fueled. We need multiple different containment units. There's a lot of different codes that we have established and that we're following that are required just to have the permits in general. So, we are kind of setting the pace on that front for fire spinning as a whole. I think as far as fire spinning events that are organized, we're the best. And, and that might be my biased opinion, but of all the events that I've been to, we are definitely the most organized, we definitely have the best equipment.
And the coolest people too.
And the coolest people. And, so that's really impressive, again, for that shoestring budget and for not having the finances that a lot of other large scale events have. So, we're looking on exploring the opportunities for that. And we have the Great Circle Safety Crew. So, that basically are the experienced organizers who help direct performers in the Great Circle, ensure everyone's wearing the proper clothing before they go out to perform, that safeties are in position and paying attention. They are also basically the second line of defense in ensuring that if something goes wrong, they're the first to react, they're the first to shut down the circle and address any immediate concerns or, or emergencies that need to be handled. Our gatekeepers, I, I guess are actually the first line of defense, I should probably call them. In terms of defense and prioritizing, so the gatekeepers obviously ensure that people are checking in as they enter the fueling area, that everyone has signed a waiver and has attended the, the safety training.
Which is also, for the record, this tall drink of water over here-
Exactly.
Is, is usually our, our big guys.
So, exactly, so, so we have leads for all of these departments. Our objective is to basically staff each of these departments with three, three to five leads that, that basically ensures that no one is solely responsible for any of these tasks. These are, these jobs, now that we have several hundred performers, have become really extensive. So, we wanna prevent anyone from being overburdened with that responsibility. So, we have three to five people that are assigned to each department. And that way, if someone can't attend, if someone's sick, if they're just not feeling it that night, we have backups, we have other people to support. Obviously, it's the event leads' roles to ensure that everything is staffed and running smoothly no matter what. But, our objective is to remain behind all of the organizers and allow them to operate so that we can facilitate the event as a whole and fill in any gaps as necessary. The Dragon Council was recently established this year because as fire breathing is becoming more and more-
Insane.
Yes, and, and appealing because it is the number one cheer reducing activity within the, within the circle. We really needed to ensure that our fire breathing expectations are, are basically the highest that they can be. Because fire breathing is without a doubt the most dangerous thing that you can do with fire, period. So, we really wanted to ensure that there was steps necessary for people to take if they wanted to pursue them. We didn't wanna make it accessible. There's another reason that the Level Two training was instituted, was because we needed people to really show us the dedication, that they were serious about learning this art form and not taking it lightly. So, the Level Two required that you attended two different, safety training events on different days so that you demonstrated that you were serious about this. So, basically, the Dragon Council is going to establish proper procedures. We are going to have a Level Three safety training that is going to be mandatory for fire breathers to attend in supplement to Level One and Two. And that they are following all the procedures, they bring their own dedicated safety, that they have the right equipment, that they have the right fire breathing bottle, that, you know, they have their own white towel, all of these different elements that they are basically being overviewed or overseen by experienced breathers who have been doing this for years. So, again, all three levels of safety training, which they must attend an offsite practice session, which will be held at the reserve, and that way they can learn more about, you know, how to fire breathe in general.
But also how we fire breathe at the jam itself.
Right.
Because anybody that's been there, it's not just always a solo performance, there's a lot of group activities.
So, it's how to, how to be aware of your surroundings, you know, and work with the people that you're, you're out there. And then, of course, obviously, as always, aware of your conditions. If the weather is not cooperative, if the wind's strength is too, too high or, or whipping around in different directions, the fire breathers, the Dragon Council has full authority to say, this is not happening, you're not doing that, whatever the case may be. Because, again, fire breathing, because it is so dangerous, is pretty much one of the few things that we do that if goes wrong, will shut us down instantly. Because that is the full, is the most dangerous thing. You can instantly die from it if something goes very wrong.
We're already, we're already walking, you know, very, very close to the line-
Right.
Playing with fire, poise, staff, any, any of the, of our other props and, like I said earlier. It's insane.
So, fire, all, version out of people's faces, we take very seriously.
So, for Level Three, where will, where will Level Three, Level Three training be done?
At the reserve jams. Yep. So, we have, we will have those dates. We're hoping to publish all of the jam dates as well as the reserve jam dates, hopefully within the next month or two. We applied for the night out in the parks and we're just waiting for their approval. So, once we have that, we will be sure to publish and share all of the events.
So, we have- One quick thing to add to that, the photographers, they love the fire breathing part and they're up in our grills whenever that's happening.
Yep.
And they're a big player that's out there when, when the fire breathing is going on. And so, I think it would be a good idea to incorporate them in some way-
Yeah.
To the reserve jam whenever someone's fire breathing.
That's a good idea, I like that. So, if they want to photograph the fire breathers, they need to take the same level of training so they understand the expectations and they have experience being in front of and around that.
Yep.
I agree with that.
That's a good point.
So, again, going back to the Guardians, basically, if anyone is familiar with Burning Man, they were based off of the concept of the Rangers, who act as a helping hand, a voice of reason and source of information to attendees of the jams. They are trained in, to aid in conflict resolution and mediation whenever needed, to assist with establishing safety procedures in the, uh, perimeters in the event of an emergency and to help act as the eyes and ears, again, of the event leads, providing updates and information on anything that needs to be addressed in the crowd. Again, we really wanna expand on this program. As our audience is growing consistently and exponentially each year, it's going to become imperative that we have these individuals out in the crowd monitoring what's happening because we need to know how to respond instantaneously due to the nature of what we do. And, and, you know, again, the tight rope that we're walking, we need to basically have eyes and ears in every, every corner. So, launch crew and the setup crew help with setting up the jams, provide support to the event leads before the jams start. A lot of carrying things from the truck, setting it out.
Should we get a car glorifying pack?
Yeah.
We need a car. Something to go ahead of you.
So.
It's not a half-bad idea.
Yeah.
It's not a half-bad idea, but.
Something to consider. But, we, we do have a very involved setup procedure. Couple of years or, what was it, four, three or four years ago, that was one of the first things I tackled, was creating a setup guide that showed us the parameters of how large the fueling area needs to be, establishing barriers to ensure that people aren't jumping the rope and that we are following the necessary procedures for the permits, which state that you need to have all ignitable fuels fifteen feet from any audience member. So, there's a lot of specific rules and reasons why the jam setups are the way they are, basically to ensure that we are upholding the, the legal requirements.
For them.
Right.
I'm sure you guys have all noticed the double barrier that we've incorporated.
Right.
That was, you know, that not only acts as the restrictions, but also an additional buffer that can't be crossed, you know, because it's a lot harder to, it's more two large pieces of obstacle and just a small piece of caution tape.
Oh, yeah, and then we've also got the, the netting, which is such a pain in my ass, but is absolutely essential because people will, and historically have always tried to jump the rope just because they don't feel like going all the way around. But, we basically got to the point where it was becoming problematic enough that we needed to set up an actual barrier that literally prevented people from just cutting across or jumping under it. I can't stand it, but it has to happen, it's such a pain in the ass. So, that's why the launch crew setup i- is really actually a very important role because I hate doing that.
We also, and we have a very limited amount of time to get it done as well too. Most of the organizers are getting there at promptly six. Safety starts immediately, definitely hopefully a little bit of a buffer. But, on the shorter months, towards the beginning of the spring and the end of the fall, darkness comes quick. And sometimes as soon as safety's over, it's time to light up. And that's why the, you know, these guys are, they're like worker ants, it's amazing.
So, we've had a lot of people step up in that. So, again, I think with the creation of these departments, creating these expectations, finding individuals to step up and really manage each of the aspects of these roles is gonna make things run a lot smoother. The Leave No Trace Crew is obviously very important as well. They help pick up and pack up all the jam gear, which, again, happens very quickly. We need to get out of the park, our permit, you know, ends and the park closes at eleven, so we need to make sure everything is out, gone by that point.
And everyone knows the blue lights of authority come on.
Exactly.
Very, very promptly, right around eleven fifty-nine.
And, that doesn't leave a lot of time for the audience to pick up after themselves and if they've been enjoying themselves a little too much, they leave stuff behind. So, we need people that are gonna go through the crowd after it, pick up any leavings and ensure that we leave the park better than when we arrived. So, Leave No Trace is really leave it better because I think that one of the reasons that jams, again, have flourished for fifteen years is that we go to the park site and we make it and we clean up for them. So, that's a huge boon to the Park District, it's a big reason that they love us, it's a big reason that we got approved the night out of the park, is because we've, we've shown consistently that we give back to the community, that we support our location and that we are conducive to a sustainable event. So, we also, of course, again, with the increase in budget, finances, the new insurance costs, basically adding fifty percent to our expenditures this year means that our fundraising team is also absolutely essential. So, helping to raise money either through grants, through crowdsourcing, through fundraising events, we need more people to step up with that as well in organizing these things that keep us going.
And to be honest, that's the most boring part of this whole process. Because this, you know, this, this is one of the jobs that, you know, it's actually one of the most left brain because it is writing and going through the legal channels and talking to the city of Chicago and it's a completely different skillset than self, perhaps, because I don't, I don't touch that part. But we have some really skilled people that are great at, you know, working with community and working with pretty, not, we won't call them stubborn, but we'll call them more professional side, you know, they're not, they're not the fun artists, so, you know.
So, then, of course, we have in supplement to that, the media crew that helps promote events, shares important information about our organization, policies, answers questions, moderates Facebook, Instagram and Twitter feeds and ensures, again, that what happens at the jam is echoed online and that our policies, our expectations, our, our vision and our sense of community is, is digitally represented. So, that's very important. Obviously, they promote the, the events, they promote fundraisers, they promote our crowdsourcing.
The correct information too.
Yeah.
That's also a big one.
That, that's important. So, we've got a, a group of people that are leading that charge beautifully right now. And then, of course, we have our event leads, which are standing ready. We are the super volunteers that have been nominated by past or current event leads. The nominations are always reviewed by the foundation board and voted on at the quarterly meetings. They are required to attend every single jam and expected to coordinate and be knowledgeable of every single department to ensure that everything always runs smooth. So, we have to be aware of all of these different aspects and different departments so that if nobody shows up from the gate, that can still happen. Better show up, because I don't wanna do that. So, so on that, and then similar note, we are also board members who are, and basically longstanding activists in the jam community who've gone above and beyond to help support the jam or facilitate or make sure that they continue to exist. They've been, they are nominated by current foundation board members, voted on again at quarterly, quarterly meetings and are expected to have familiarity with event organization, working knowledge of diversity, equity, inclusion and have art-based grant writing experience and/or negotiation and team building skills, which are essential towards ensuring that the jams continue to organize and expand and improve. So, some other things we wanted to make clear were how decisions were made in the jams and basically, again, give more insight into who's running the jams, how decisions are made. So, all ideas that anyone has, period, should be given to an event lead first or emailed to info@moonjam.org. Depending on the scope of the idea, it may be brought to the foundation board for consideration. A discussion will take place and the proposal will be voted on. Currently, all decisions require consensus for approval, so if any board member objects, the proposal will not pass. It could be something as small as, you know, I think we should have a, a gate stamp or whatever and if it's just great, yeah, everyone agrees, that should happen, boom, motion passed. But if it's something more significant, like we wanna host a fundraiser or we wanna represent the jam or we wanna host, these are things that obviously require more consideration and so therefore the board's gonna have more involved conversation about them.
And also, I mean, he might, he might touch on it a little bit, but that's also the whole point of these town hall meetings as well too. It, it was brought to our attention that perhaps we weren't involving the community at large, especially the people that do give their blood, sweat and tears to the jam. So, this town hall meeting and the town hall meetings to come are a direct result of us listening to what you guys had to say for that. And going forward, these town hall meetings will be a direct, will almost kind of be the, the baseline of how decisions are notified, communicated and eventually decided upon, so.
So, on that, we, we also throughout the season regularly meet with organizers either through one-on-one or in smaller groups so that we can continue our conversation. After every jam, we meet with organizers to discuss how the jam went, give any ideas on, you know, event issues that needed to be addressed at that, at that particular jam and ways to improve moving forward. So, that's another requirement of the event leads, is that they meet and touch base with all organizers, make sure that they are, you know, that there is an open communication policy and that- and that everyone feels like they can voice themselves and they can approach us and that any issues that they have can be addressed because obviously, this is again, a community-based event. We want everyone to have a voice. We want everyone to feel included. And, uh, it is what makes the jam so special is that everyone has participated and that everyone has a perspective that we might not have. So that's essential. So how does the organization communicate? There's an online forum that organizers and event leads use to discuss upcoming events. After every jam, all organizers, like I said, join the leads for post-jam meeting, celebrate and discuss issues that need to be addressed. The Foundation Boards have a similar forum and meet quarterly, either in person or via conference calls. And then once or twice a year, hopefully twice a year, we'd love to have another town hall. We invite everyone to, uh, discuss the season and suggest any changes that they'd like to see implemented. So how, of course, does one become a Full Moon Jam organizer? Um, organizers are recruited by event leads from those that have consistently volunteered or have gone above and beyond again to help facilitate the jams. They might be recruit, uh, event leads may recruit specific skillsets for specific needs. We need someone who needs to be a fundraiser. We might have a reach out about that. We need a new Fuel Depot representative. We might have a reach out about that. Um, or we might just simply notice that, uh, someone has remarkable and inclusive participation and would be a fantastic representation or, um, addition to our team. The best way to become an organizer is to show up to as many jams as possible. Ask how you can help out.